Good evening and welcome to the September 13th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. If we could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just a few things. I know Robin has been asking us if we plan on going virtual or in person. So the next few meetings are noticed as both. I have been advised by Nancy, who's taking the minutes, and Tom, that when we do speak into the mics, sometimes especially myself, the mask muffles us a little bit, so we might have to just get closer to the mic. That being said, we had some cor-- oh, Jim, let me ask a question. So we get a lot of last minute, when I say last minute, like stuff that came in today.
Today, right.
Is there, you know, like a limit we could say, you know, after this point? Because I'm honestly, some of this, yeah, like a cutoff point, because some of the stuff you're looking at as we get it.
Mm-hmm, well, the problem is while a public hearing is open, no, we can't really say that. When we close the public hearing, we have a right to establish a comment period. But for anything that has an open public hearing, the public can submit anything until after the public hearing closes and after the comment period expires.
Okay, but stuff that's not related to a public hearing? We could if we--
You're gonna have to consider it either at that meeting or at the following meeting.
Understood. All right, thank you. Okay, so we have some correspondence. Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
All right, we'll go on to the meeting minutes of August 9th, 2021. Anybody have any issues?
Nope, no issues. Nothing from me, Richard.
Just so you know, Roxanne was the third member at this meeting, and she has reviewed them.
Oh, that's, okay, she has. Okay. All right, so how would that work if we did a vote, did she?
Well, I think you have to postpone the order.
Well, I think you can vote on minutes even if you weren't there.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Motion, uh, motions accept. Motion to accept. Second.
All the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Number one.
Okay, we're gonna move into the regular session portion of the meeting.
There's two sets of minutes on.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. Oh, there's August 16th, too, I apologize. We also have the August 16th, 2021 minutes.
Motion takes--
Is there a second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move into the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have Crystal Court subdivision. This is a decision statement. Location is 43 Crystal Court. Or that's the sheet block, that's Crystal Court, Tanvar Realty.
Good evening, gentlemen, how are ya? Louis Panny. How are you today?
So Robin, anything we need to talk about with this?
Um, well, the latest submission was response to the tree commission, correct? You submitted your revised tree plan?
Yes.
That's in your, your books?
And I believe they were okay. I believe they were okay with everything that we sent in.
I wrote you a quick summary of that.
Have you guys seen this?
May I see that, Rick?
This is to us. Is there one directly, no. Let me go through. So we have a letter from the planning department to the planning board dated September 10th, 2021. Uh, Crystal Court mitigation plan. In response to the Tree Conservation Advisory Commission. Memo dated July 11th, 2021. The applicant submitted revised mitigation plans that show the following. One, the hickory trees were identified as shag bark hickory. Two, the planning department had already worked with the applicant to keep any trees not developed or, or not in the developed area or graded areas. Number three, the proposed trees are measured, can't hear? I'm sorry. The proposed trees are measured in caliper. Number four, the hobble bush, Vibermium, I'm gonna mispronounce this terribly. Anapholium and arrowwood, Vibermian, Datrium, were replaced with spice, spice bush and winterberry. Number five, same as number four. Number six, inspection should be done twice a year or as needed during monitoring program. Number seven, there are two mitigation plans. The wetland buffer planting plan that mitigates the disturbance and tree loss in the wetland, including a violation. And a tree replacement plan that mitigates the additional trees removed on the lots to build the homes. The board must consider whether sufficient mitigation is proposed. And there's some additional comments. When did you meet with the tree board?
I haven't met with them in a while. I know, uh, Paul, the arborist that we hired, was in contact with them. I don't know if there was any changes made since then, but I haven't heard of any.
So there's a July 11th memo here, have you seen that? That deals with what we're talking about in this.
Looks like they, uh, addressed it all in this.
So it looks like--
Looks like it's all been addressed.
Everything's been--
Yeah.
Paul Jering, I believe his name is Jering, was the last one to speak with them regarding this. He was, he was the arborist that, that we contracted. And I believe he did whatever he'd need with, needed with them.
So anything else on your end, Robin?
No, I had just asked, um, one of my comments was that you had a tree replacement plan originally before you had Paul?
Yes.
And the trees obviously shown in the area that Paul is planting should be taken off that plan, right?
Oh, okay, yes, I did see that, yes, that--
But we're leaving the trees that you're planting that you had shown on the other lot?
Yes, we are.
Right, so that just, that changed that on your--
Okay, that makes sense.
Improvement plans.
Right.
Um, and then they submitted the draft conservation easement, which was the template that I had actually sent them. Um, and I made several comments to them today on the plat. One is what's listed here, that the waterline easement should be on the plat. And then there were a couple minor comments from the town assessor.
Right, that was the, and then there was the labeling on the plat is what you wanted, right? Correct.
Jim, had you had the chance to review the agreement?
Yeah, it was one change that I'd like the applicants to make, but I wouldn't want it to hold up approval. And that is that the easement should contain language that the easement runs with the land and touches and concerns the land and is binding on these successors and assigns of the grantor. That's fairly standard language in any easement. So if you could do that, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, that sounds easy enough, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We could put that language in the resolution of approval. And does the rest of the recommendations that you put forward, are they included in the draft resolution tonight? I see two of them, I think are in there.
Uh, the assessor's comments were not included, so I can add those, which was just labeling on the plan. On the plat.
You all right with that? Jim?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any more comments?
No.
No? Jim?
All right, if they could just resubmit the easement to me, I'll approve it and arrange for them.
Okay. Robin?
We could just put conservation easement language to the satisfaction of the planning board's attorney, right?
Yeah, that would be fine, Robin.
Okay. Dan, anything to add?
I think it's in there, um, that we get a final--
Sorry, Tom.
Sorry. That, uh, the issue being is that we get a final look at the stormwater pollution prevention plan. It's unclear how they're treating the runoff from the cul-de-sac, so that'll all be worked out between us and the DEP prior to them being allowed to start construction.
Understood, okay.
That's in there.
You have any questions?
Not at the moment, no. Just the language will come to us on this, that we need to--
Yeah, I think you'll hear from Robin.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Anything else? Okay, in front of us, we have a neg deck. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Lead agency first.
Oh, geez, I apologize. Do I have a motion to be the lead agency?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have a neg deck in front of us. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have a resolution approving the subdivision plat, wetland permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and tree permit for Crystal Court with the changes as noted. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, guys, take care.
Good luck, guys.
Two. Sidney, is it on you?
They had the air on before and they shut it off.
Nice to get things done.
Next to Foothill.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Foothill Street Solar. This is a public hit, uh, hearing. Location is 3849 Foothill Street. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, you're on.
This is Chairman, members of the board. As you may recall, I don't very rarely read from notes in my presentations to this board, but I know you have a very lengthy agenda tonight, and I think I can be more brief by doing so. And you probably will appreciate the brevity.
Yes, thank you.
For the record, my name is Joe Shanahan. I'm employed by Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses, and I'm here this evening to seek the approvals necessary to develop a 1.87 megawatt solar facility at 3849 Foothill Street. The site consists of 34.23 acres, which has been owned by the Lockwood family for generations. Con Edison would lease the site and use less than half of it, that's 15.9 acres, to develop the solar project. I shall apologize at the beginning for any part of this presentation which is redundant as I first introduced this project at the town of Yorktown over three years ago and have been before this board many times over the years. Some members of this board have heard parts of this presentation previously, but this is the first time it has been presented in the form of a public hearing. Over the three years, we have massaged this proposal to make sure that the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, and we fully comply with the requirements set forth in your zoning code. Along with the site plan and permit application packages, we have submitted the required tree inventory and mitigation plan. We have presented a detailed landscape plan and planting plan to enhance the natural buffer. We have also conducted a sound study to demonstrate compliance with the town's sound limits, and we have submitted a detailed decommissioning plan and cost estimate. In a minute, I'd like to introduce Eric Redding of Bergman Associates, who has worked with me on this project for the last three years, to present an overview. After Eric is done, we'll then spend some time to address the three component parts of the proposal which have generated most of the discussion on this project over the last three years. The first of which would be tree cutting. The second would be stormwater runoff and our treatment features. And last would be the natural buffers and plantings to address any visual impacts. Eric, if you would.
Hi, good evening, Eric Redding with Bergman.
How are you?
And I'm the engineer who worked on these plans. And as Joe mentioned, we're proposing a community solar farm along Foothill Street. It's in the area of the intersection with Lockwood Road as well as Putnam Valley High School. The existing site is mostly a wooded area, as you know, and then there is a stream and some wetlands running through the middle of the site. So the solar array is gonna be on the northeast side of the stream and wetland area. Access to the site is being proposed by a 20-foot wide, limited-use pervious gravel driveway. It's about 300 linear feet long. We're also proposing two new utility poles at the beginning of the driveway, and that's for electrical equipment to tie into the existing electrical grid. We're also proposing an equipment pad as well as a battery storage for, that's gonna be adjacent to the driveway as well. The solar panels themselves will sit on approximately four and a half acres, and they will be about 10 feet high on the highest end and about 3 feet high on the lowest end, and they'll be fully enclosed within a seven-foot-high chain-link fence per National Electric Code. There will also be a 16-foot-wide double-swing gate at the entrance for access, and there will also be a Knox box at the gate for fire department access. For stormwater management, we are proposing a grass swale, a bioretention area, as well as two detention ponds in addition to the limited-use pervious gravel driveway, and that will provide the necessary water quality treatment for the stormwater runoff, and it will also detain the stormwater so that the peak rate of runoff from pre-development to post-development is the same or slightly lower per DEC requirements. For landscaping and screening, we're proposing a staggered row of evergreen trees along Foothill Street, so it'll have a full screen and full blocking of visuals from Foothill Street. And then we're also proposing tightly spaced arbivites around the equipment pad as well as the battery storage area, and that will provide additional screening for those features. Any areas that are disturbed as part of this project will be reseeded with a wildflower or meadow type of seed mix that is pollinator-friendly. And that's an overview of the, the entire project. So Joe will dive into a couple of those topics he mentioned.
Yes, Chairman, as the board is aware, one of the matters that has been addressed frequently over the last couple of years is the matter of cutting 15.9 acres of trees to put the solar facility in. As I've stated since my first visit to Yorktown three years ago, Bill Lockwood is going to develop this site, whether as a solar project or in the alternative, a residential subdivision. So as this board would be aware and only make sense, whatever the alternative development might be, there is going to be tree cutting at this particular site. Last March, at the suggestion of John Tegger, I submitted a letter to the board comparing the impacts of the solar project with the conventional subdivision and the cluster subdivisions, which Mr. Lockwood has previously presented to the board. Show the first to the board. The cluster subdivision was a 20-watt cluster subdivision. The conventional subdivision was also a 20-watt. One had three access roads, the other had two, I'm sorry. Thank you. In doing that comparison at Mr. Tegger's suggestion, we found that the solar project, as I've stated, requires 15.9 acres of trees to be cut. The conventional subdivision would actually have more trees being cut, 16.11 acres. The cluster, just a little less, at 14.26 acres. But as usual, the devil is in the details. The environmental impacts of the solar versus the residential development are significant. With its roads, driveways, and rooftops, the subdivisions would create 2.9 acres and 2.61 acres of impervious materials respectively. The solar project would generate only 0.07 acres of impervious air. It's exponentially greater. In addition, as you would imagine, a residential subdivision is going to generate traffic and emissions. The homeowners will all have vehicles, their guests will have vehicles, the school buses that pick up the kids, the ever-present Prime and Amazon delivery trucks will all bring traffic and air pollution to the site. The solar project produces no traffic whatsoever after the construction is completed, and therefore no air pollution. It would, however, have a positive and indirect effect as solar energy replaces or reduces the use of other energy sources that have larger impacts on the environment. This one, 1.87 megawatt solar project, would save 2,214 tons of carbon dioxide each year. By contrast, the 15.9 acre area of trees that would be cut, if preserved, would absorb only 40 acres of CO2 during the same one-year, one-year period. That's less than 2% sequestration of what the solar project would offset. In closing, with regard to the matter of tree cutting, I would remind the planning board that while the town's conservation board has expressed its concern about the amount of tree clearing necessary for the solar project, the Tree Conservation Advisory Commission, which was created to advise the town board, the conservation board, and the planning board with respect to tree conservation, issued a memo to this planning board back on March 22nd, which stated in part, and I'm quoting, "The comparison of solar versus residential development by Joe Shanahan on behalf of the applicant is instructive. While there may be some opportunities for mitigation of tree removals under residential development, the comparison makes clear the superior environmental benefits of the solar development. The non-permanent alteration of the landscape under the solar plan is key when compared to the permanent alteration under the residential alternative, not to mention the environmental benefits of providing a significant amount of clean energy." With that, I'd ask Mr. Redding to address the matter of stormwater runoff. As the board may recall, particularly by the Putnam Valley School District, there were some assertions that this project would exacerbate the groundwater runoff. Mr. Redding will address that.
Yeah, so I can touch upon stormwater a little bit more detail. So as Joe mentioned, we broke out the analysis points from this site into two. So part of the site drains to the stream that I mentioned that runs through the site, and then the other portion of the site along the northern edge drains towards the Putnam Valley High School. And we analyzed both of those locations. And for each of the design storms, which is the one, 10, and 100-year design storms, the peak rate of runoff is decreased for each one slightly. So I know design point two, which is what we have going to the Putnam Valley High School, for instance, for the 100-year storm, it decreases from 27.29 CFS to 25.38 CFS. So it's very, very close, but just slightly lower. And we were able to achieve that by the use of the bioretention area that we have, as well as a detention pond, that before it discharges off of our property line in that area. So we have looked at, you know, both water quality and water quantity mitigation for both of the design points, and we meet both the town's requirements as well as the New York State DEC requirements with respect to stormwater runoff. We're also adhering to the 100-foot buffer to the wetland and stream. So that 100-foot buffer off of the, that, those areas will help maintain the, the ecological nature of the stream. So any stormwater runoff will have that 100-foot buffer of trees and any, you know, disturbed areas before it goes into the stream. So we do maintain that along the entire length of stream through our site.
The last issue I'd like to address, Mr. Chairman, was the matter of visual impact. If I may just share this, I know you've seen-- Thank you. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Are you gonna share this with the, the audience?
I have additional copies, if anyone cares.
I mean, is, is there a way to put it on the screen, or are there any?
Well, I'm not gonna go through them one by one anyway, I'm just handing them out. They've been previously submitted to the board. Purpose for it, however, is to just indicate to the board that because of the way this project is being developed, basically in the center of the Lockwood site, we have a very, very good, natural, existing buffer on three sides of the project. The one side of the project that doesn't have sufficient buffer is the Foothill Avenue. And obviously, Foothill Street is the area that gets most of the traffic in that area. When we looked at it, initially, I had proposed a stockade fence to screen that side of the project. The first time I met with Mr. Tegger to review my plans, he said, "I don't like it. I won't have it, get rid of it." So I said, "What do you want me to do in its place?" And he said, "I want additional plantings to enhance the natural buffer." We brought in a registered landscape architect. He drove the site, he walked the site. When he was finished, we ended up with a 50-foot setback where we touched nothing along Foothill Street. But in addition to that, we've developed, and it's included in the handout, a planting and mitigation plan where we would add 212 plantings before the project would open up. Those would not be two, three-foot shrubs that you'd have to wait 15 years to see any growth develop. As you can see from the specifications, this is a $160,000 planting plan. The 212 plants all will go in at at least 6 feet and most averaging 8 feet. We've also prorated the growth over the next five years, and all of those shrubs of plants will be up to 14 to 15 feet high at the five-year point. What I've handed out tonight and have previously submitted, a photo simulation showing the site on day one with the plantings, and at year five with the development and growth and maturation of those plantings. As a result of that planting plan, five years from now, this project will be all but invisible. But at day one, before the plant went operational, it will be barely visible. The only side where there will be some visibility would be on the Foothill Street side. But I think with the plantings on day one at 6 to 8 feet tall, anyone driving by would have to look to find the solar project as opposed to see the solar project. So I think that's very important to put in the view of the planning board and the public. With that having been said, I hope I was brief enough. If the board or anyone else has any questions, Mr. Redding or I would be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to speak to the matter?
Good evening, Susan Siegel.
Hello, Susan.
Some of these comments have been made before at an April public informational hearing, but some they are repeating, and then there's some, some new comments. At the August 9th meeting, the planning board decided that this application needed a review of the, the environmental review, okay? So my first question is, what is the status of that environmental review? Has, one, has the town, the town has an environmental consultant on call. Has the town board, number one, agreed to get a proposal from that, from that firm? Has an agreed-upon scope of work been, been decided for what will be included in, in that environmental review? And who has provided any input on that scope of work? For example, the tree commission, the conservation board, and even the public, okay? The tree commission might want to talk about not just the carbon issue on the trees, but also the, the multiple functions that trees provide that will be destroyed. But I'll get to that later. But I'll get to that later. So, again, the scope of work. Has a consultant submitted a proposal? Okay? Has the planning board?
Can you do me a favor, just lower it? I can hear it much louder when you lower it a little bit.
Okay.
I don't think you're going to break it.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. One of these days, we will be without masks, hopefully.
Yes, I hope so.
As we would say, alibi. And then, has the town board, if there has been a proposal, has the planning board reviewed it and discussed it? Will the public have an opportunity to comment on that? Has Con Edison seen the proposal, if it exists? And what's the estimated timing? We're a month beyond when the planning board decided to have this consultant. So those are some of the basic questions that I, I know most of these public hearings are to give you comments, but if I ask questions, I hope that there will be some responses. Let me talk about some of the comments that Mr. Shanahan made about the cluster and the conventional subdivision. I discussed this at the April meeting, but since Mr. Shanahan has repeated the comments, I think it bears repeating. And you also have a memo from the Conservation Board that addresses the same thing. Mr. Lockwood got an approval for a cluster subdivision in approximately 2008. He didn't build it. My understanding was that there was a problem with the cluster plan requires project being sewered, and he could not get approval from the Board of County Board of Health because the sewer line had crossed the stream. That either has to be confirmed or whatever. But in more than a decade, Mr. Lockwood has not come in with another subdivision. He obviously can't, if the sewer problem exists, he can't do it sewed. He'd have to do it on septic. Who says he's going to get 20 lots on septic? Has there been any kind of groundwater study to see if it could manage that? So I think the whole trade-off between clear-cutting 15 acres for solar and even more clear-cutting for a subdivision is a very specious argument because there hasn't been, there hasn't been a subdivision. So I don't think that should factor into the board's decision at all, and I think the record will show that. I'm glad that the tree inventory has finally, finally been done. This has been one of the glaring omissions in this plan, and I had a chance to look at it today. 1,871 trees will have to be cut. Let me repeat that number. 1,871 trees. Okay? The tree inventory lists 2,000 trees. They're all numbered. I won't quibble about 200 trees, but you get the point. We are going to clear-cut 1,871 trees. That is something, that carbon is only one aspect. There are multiple, multiple functions that trees provide. I don't think I'm going to, I'm not here to give you a lesson on the functions of trees, but this is something that the environmental consultant clearly has to look into. The mitigation plan, which was basically provided before we even knew how many trees were being cut, is a very generic kind of thing. Okay? And it doesn't necessarily have any relevance to the number of trees to be cut. So there really isn't a substantial, significant, appropriate mitigation plan. A point has also been made about after five years, these new plantings will just be so tall that you won't see anything. Well, those are computer-generated simulations, and I've seen them at previous meetings. They look wonderful. But trees don't grow by computers. They grow thanks to Mother Nature. And Mother Nature isn't always as generous as a computer simulation is. So there is absolutely no guarantee that what percentage of those plantings will survive and to what extent that they will grow. Okay? On the visual impact, this afternoon, I took a ride down Croton Avenue in Cortland. I don't think I've ever been down that road for the 51 years I've lived here. And I went to see a solar farm there. It's on, I think it's the site of the old Croton Egg Farm. And I did that because a town board member said he saw them, and they were, quote, ugly. So I wanted to see them. I've seen pictures of them. I urge you to go take a look at them. Okay? And take a look at what? Clear-cutting 15 acres? I don't know what that site was before. Okay? I have a suspicion that a lot of it was cleared, but that's just my guess. But think about your clear-cutting 15 acres to put in what's there, and I urge you to go down and take a look at that. Clearly, you cannot adjourn this hearing. Mr. Shanahan was anxious to get the hearing started. He has every right to do that. But this obviously has to be adjourned, and we don't know adjourned for how long because my first question is, what about the environmental consultant? Okay? Nothing, nothing can be done until that environmental consultant provides a scope of work, that scope of work is reviewed by all the interested parties, and then presented, and that could possibly take months. So again, I urge you, and thank you for your time. 1,871 trees. Please consider that. Okay? And consider the importance of trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? How are you?
Hello, I'm good. Thank you. I'm happy that we're actually able to hold these meetings.
Yes.
With or without masks. Anyway, I'm Paul Moskowitz, and I'm speaking for the Advisory Committee on Open Space. We have visited this and walked this site twice, and we have some comments. Before I get into that, I have to make one comment. As an engineer, listening to Mr. Shanahan, he explained what he thinks is the advantage of solar panels over trees in terms of absorbing carbon from the atmosphere. However, he failed to mention that we have a forest which has been taking carbon out of the atmosphere for 50 to 100 years, depending on how you look at it. If you cut it down all at once, you'll be releasing, let's say, 50 years of carbon into the atmosphere, and that has to be taken into account. So let's get to the open space. I'll get back to that in a moment. We looked at this land, and we felt that this would be appropriate for acquisition by the town as open space because of the forested area, the wetlands, and also the stream. However, at the very least, we would like to see a trail for recreational purposes along the stream because of the beauty of the stream. That trail could start at the northern end of the property and run all the way to Mohegan Lake because the stream is, in fact, the Mohegan Lake outlet stream. So we'd like to hear about that. As far as destroying 1,000, however many, 1,871?
Yes.
Oh, good.
That's according to the Tree Service.
My mind is still working. There is a certain amount of counterproductive activity in destroying a forest to put up solar collectors. I believe in solar energy. I already subscribe to a solar, community solar energy farm in Yorktown. And I urge everyone else who can do that, just go to the Sustainable Westchester Land website and sign up. It saves a lot of money, and it helps the environment. In Yorktown, there have already been a number of large-scale solar installations, many small ones, but I can mention four large-scale ones. There's the IBM parking lot. There's a town, Granite Knolls parking lot. There's a JV mall, JV Mall roof, and also Arcadia Farm. I subscribe to the Arcadia Farm solar project on the roof of the barn. However, they have a proposal to install solar collectors on another eight acres. That is, that is mostly pasture land. The JV mall is a roof. The town solar installation will be over a parking lot. All of these have one thing in common: they do not require a lot of tree cutting. I believe, having been involved at public hearings on the initial proposal for the law, that a section was added which said the applicant should look at other locations and that forested land should be the last on the list. I would like to know whether they have done that. Clearly, we have examples of four large-scale solar farms which are not destroying 15 acres of trees. So the question is, has that been done? Have they looked at alternatives sites? And why are they so fixed on cutting down 15 acres of trees? Thank you.
Thank you. Any of us care to speak?
Can I get one of those handouts?
Yeah, you can take this.
Because I live right across the street on Foothill Street.
I'm sorry, can you just say your name into the mic?
My name is Barbara Call, and I live at 3,900 Foothill Street. And I'm just concerned about the rock walls that are all aligned on the side of the road. How are we making progress with preservation if we're going to take down all these trees and all these rock walls?
So you're, where exactly are you in comparison to the project?
Can I walk up there?
Yeah.
I am, right here. So right across the street from this gravel driveway, which would the town be able to use to turn around, the garbage truck, the refu, the town pickup trucks, the plow trucks, the, what's it called, the school districts, they turn around right there because it's the Putnam County line. So I just want to make sure they, keep that in mind, too.
Okay.
So, I don't have much to say about it, but I'm not happy about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other point.
Were you again?
What?
Were you again? So I'm giving you.
Let me think about it. Something Paul said, which I'd like to bring to your attention. Number one, obviously, I am a supporter of solar. Okay? And I think that always has to be said. It's not like I'm against it. Okay? But in the appropriate place. And Paul mentioned the town law that says, basically, unused agricultural land, okay? Rooftops. And then the last possibility is when you have to, basically, clear-cut, which this is. Paul mentioned some of the very positive solar projects we have, the rooftops or the JV mall, the IBM, the Granite Knolls. Even some of the solar farms on the ground have been on pasture land, like Hemlock Hills. Okay? Some trees are going to have to be cut a kitchen on at Arcadia, but, okay. Hill is not a working farm, so that's questionable about that. But here, we're dealing with clear-cutting. There is a significant difference, and that doesn't work into the town's priorities. And so when you have to look at all the criteria for the special permit, okay? Yeah, they've checked off, and they've done A, B, C, and D, and E, but you have to look at what you're doing to the environment, and that is an important aspect that you do have to look at and that you are not bound by it. And it's not just, I'm going to plant 20, 30, 50 trees in its place. So think about that as you look at your legal responsibility, because if you say no to deny this, you have to give substantial reasons. And they would be that it doesn't really fit into the town's priorities, and it also is environmentally totally unsound. Thank you.
Thank you. Just the responses. First, we fully understand the need to engage an environmental consultant in connection with this project. To be perfectly candid, we're very disappointed that a month's gone by and nothing's transpired to engage that consultant, although I understand there were some contractual things between the town and the consultant having nothing to do with this project. It probably took some time. So Robin communicated with me last week that that's now in the works, and we look forward as the public looks forward to that input. The other thing I would point out is that this site is zoned to allow for solar. Con Edison supports alternatives, rooftops, canopies, and the like, and we do that. But in this particular case, alternatives are not a ground to turn down a project that complies under the zoning map and under the zoning requirements. The fact that you might be able to put a project on a roof, or you might be able to put a project in a pasture, is not a justification to say you can't put it at this location. And I'd respectfully ask that the board keep that in mind as it proceeds with this process. The last thing I'd like to say is, we would very much like the consultant to get on board and move rapidly. I think it was Mr. La Scala at the last meeting that said, "Maybe we could get the report by the time of the public hearing on September 13th." Nobody expected that we wouldn't even have the consultant engaged by this date. So whatever can be done to move that ahead, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the audience? How are you?
I'm Linda Miller. I would like some information about the mitigation plan for cutting these trees because, according to the tree law, the mitigation has to address the specific functions that are going to be lost. The tree law is very specific about emphasizing functions of trees and woodlands. And so how are the functions of these trees going to be determined, if that's not already been done? And how is that going to be mitigated? That would be my question, and I would really like to see that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? The board have any comments?
So, obviously, a few things came out tonight that we should talk about. One, we are waiting for the environmental consult and report. I think once they get a handle of what the project is, we'll know better what it is they're going to be looking at. Clearly, what you just brought up would have to get looked at because that's past us, you know, that kind of study. So I think that's something we'll be looking to that group to do. So, obviously, we're waiting on that. And speed, of course, in all due respect to the applicant, we'll try to make that happen. But I do think we have to look at a scope.
Who is going to pay for the environmental consultant? The town?
No, the applicant.
So why can't we make it, if we hire him, he's got to have it in before the next? I mean...
Well, I think they were, the town board, and Ed, correct me if I misspeak, but the town board went out, they interviewed consultants, they had, the legal eagles had to work out the contracts and everything else, which, you know, when you get two lawyers in a room, no disrespect.
It's not a burden, it shouldn't be a burden on the other.
No, I agree, but I think past that, you know, it's something that has to get done. I think we know it has to get done. And, you know, I'm thinking about the presentation and some of the comments, and, you know, I think Susan called it, or someone called it, a trade-off between the development and the solar. I don't think there's anybody up here that's anti-solar, but we are responsible development. We are looking for responsible development. We've had a bunch of solar farms or otherwise come in that I think the public has heard this board say, "This just seems like the right location to have this." And then others that have come in, and we've taken pause. And with all due respect to the applicant and everybody that came up, we have taken pause on this because we are concerned. That's the reason the board voted to get the environmental consultant, because we are concerned. So I think we share everybody's concern. You know, Mrs. Call got up and said that, you know, she's right across the street from the entrance and that this is where the vehicles turn around because it's the Westchester-Putnam Line. This is something we just found out tonight, so this is something we need to look into. So clearly, there are issues and concerns we need to look into. Again, we've, the town has retained a consultant to do just that. So we are going to respectfully ask that we hold this over so we can get that. And when we do start to work through that, obviously, everybody will be involved.
What do you mean, hold the public hearing open?
Open, because we don't have the information we asked for. So until we get the information we're asking for, we have other advisory boards, the Conservation One, in fact... one in fact, and our own people asking questions that we just don't have the answers to. So Jim, unless there's something else that you?
No, I think at this point, you could close the public hearing, but you then have a limited amount of time to make secret findings. And so if you, if you closed the public hearings and didn't make, didn't have the information to make the secret findings, we could result in having a default approval, which is something that's not in my interest as an attorney to try to defend, and it's also not in the interest of the community.
Understood. Robin?
So I think the result, the end result is we have to keep the public hearing open until we get the consultant's report.
I understand. Anything on your end, Robin? Any concerns?
No, I think we have spoken to the environmental consultant. The proposal is forthcoming, and I don't believe that it will take months to go through their proposal scope and then getting a report back.
I would imagine not. Any questions? Mr. Shanahan?
No, I just like this question.
Go ahead.
If the applicant is paying for the town consultant?
Yes.
And there's a delay on the town consultant's part, why can't the applicant pay for his own consultant?
So that would be, that would be a conflict. Well, it's a conflict. So if the town and the town board has gone out, just like the traffic consultant, they've gone out and they've done their diligence to interview engineers, consultants, that the town board has ultimately signed off on to represent the town. So it's the process. I understand your concerns, but it's just, it's the process.
I just want to be fair to the applicant.
No, I understand where you're coming from.
And Chairman, part of the problem is we also haven't had a meeting since the middle of August.
Yeah.
So tomorrow, we come back for the first.
Yeah, listen, we, I think everybody more than we all care to mention understand the turmoil the last year and a half has brought on everybody, and especially the last few weeks, the storms, you talk about 100-year storms, you know? I think we had two in two weeks. So if the applicant has no objections, I would vote to, or ask that we hold this open.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Rich?
Yes.
The town's traffic consultant is like five minutes away for Taco Bell. Could we maybe just do the International School first?
I don't think anybody would have any problem with that. You sure we don't want to keep Steinmetz till the end?
Hold them over.
Did you make a note of that for the record? I haven't even gotten to the podium, and I've gotten abused.
Getting harassed.
The good news is.
Still in by the hour, though, right?
I do the stuff pro bono. You get to go for this? The good news is Donna gets to leave earlier as a result of you doing this first. So on behalf of Donna Maiello, I appreciate the fact that you've taken Shrub Oak International out of order. Good evening.
Good evening. So let me first open, we have the Shrub Oak International School. This is a public hearing. Location is 3151 Stony Street. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Open.
Second. All's in favor.
Aye.
You're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz, here representing the Shrub Oak International School, along with Donna Maiello from Difney, Tongan, and Schwab. Last meeting, we attempted to try to figure out if there was a way to avoid the need for this public hearing out of an abundance of caution, and under the advice of your counsel, you decided to do so. We're totally fine. We noticed it. We're here. This is simply an application to amend our prior site plan approval for this school to carve some things out of the first phase and defer or delay them to the second phase. We identified them at the last meeting. We discussed them with you. We're happy to go through them again if you wish. I don't necessarily think we need to. Donna can describe it all in detail. We have plans that we can share with you as well, but I have nothing more affirmatively to present unless you wish.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I don't see anybody in the audience. Is anybody here to talk to this application?
Just the rest of my team on the next matter.
Yes. Does anybody want to give Steinmetz a hard time? So I think we've been through this. All right, and I got to tell you, I think you guys have been a great neighbor.
Yes.
I think everything we saw up there and we did that site walk, you guys are really doing the right thing out there, and I think everybody's very happy that you're.
Thank you. So glad to hear that.
That existing building. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the Shrub Oak International School?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to declare this board as the lead agency?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to accept a neg deck that we have in front of us?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
And then we have a resolution approving an amended phasing plan for the construction of the site plan approved by Resolution 18-04 for the Shrub Oak International School. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
You're all set.
Well, good. Everybody say goodnight to Donna.
Take care. Thank you for coming. Okay.
Yep.
Perfect time? Everything's good until they come back and want to put in some solar.
Everybody's here? Okay, so we are now on to the Taco Bell Mohegan Lake. This is an adjourned public hearing. Location is 3571 Mohegan Avenue. Do I have a motion to reopen the hearing?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz, here representing the application for Taco Bell, along with Paul Dumont and Mark Patraro from John Meyer Consulting, JMC. This is my first appearance on this application. I have represented this applicant in other locations. I have represented them in connection with Taco Bells in other locations and recently secured approvals, along with Paul, for a Taco Bell in Briar Cliff. I was asked to get involved in this application to try to make sure that the client fully understood the issues before them and to help with the process before your board. I think I'm fairly up to speed. I have read most of the record. I have read all of the recent communications that have come in. Robin has been, Robin and John have both been kind enough to brief me, and I was very pleased that we received a copy of the Sam Schwartz Report of September 2nd. It's quite clear to me, as a former Yorktown resident, as somebody who has done a considerable amount of work in that area, and having represented Mohegan Lake Motors diagonally across the street from this application, that traffic at Mohegan Ave and Route 6 was going to be the predominant issue in connection with this matter. I was pleased that our clients had brought Mark and Paul in to specifically analyze that. We have taken a very close look at traffic, and having read the letters that Robin referred to us today, it's clear that many of our neighbors are concerned not only about traffic, but whether the town had its own independent traffic expert, which, pleased to see that someone is here from Sam Schwartz this evening, so that the record should be clear, the town did retain its own independent traffic expert. Secondly, there were a number of questions about an item that I guess is later on your agenda this evening, Enviro Green, if I said that name correctly.
Yes.
We got a few different communications asking whether a comprehensive traffic analysis took that into account, and I learned from Paul and Mark that that application, though it has been taking some time and I guess going through the process somewhat slowly, we took all of the traffic associated with that application into account. That was baked into our numbers as it was required to under SECRE. So I think tonight, what we really wanted to focus on, if the board wishes, are the main issues of drive, the drive-through in terms of the queuing at the drive-through and the pass-by lane, and why we believe, and our clients believe, that the site as designed is functional, it will work well. We do not think we necessarily need to have the capability of having 11 cars on a queue, but I'm going to defer to Paul and Mark to walk through some of the details, Mr. Chairman, if you wish. We think we can do this efficiently, and despite the fact that there have been a number of written communications, there's nobody here in the audience tonight, so that's why I'm trying to preemptively address the fact, I know the questions, we read the communications, we want to address them on the record. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
Thank you.
I'm Paul. No, I'm kidding. Mark Patraro from JMC.
How are you?
Good, good. Hope everyone's doing well, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for having us. So as David had mentioned, we did receive the Sam Schwartz review letter dated September 2nd, 2021. Happy to see and read through the report. They reviewed our traffic study for the development as well as our site plans for the project. They did have some comments as it relates to queuing and bypass. So one of the comments, you can see that Paul had put up a rendered landscape plan of the development, but one of the comments relates to the bypass lane. The comment was from Sam Schwartz to provide additional length to the bypass lane. So the applicant is willing to propose that additional widening as a condition of approval to accommodate the bypass lane to be fully the full length of the drive-through. So it would extend from the pickup window all the way to where you would enter into the drive-through lane would be the bypass lane. So the applicant is amenable to accommodating that.
Mark, just for the record, it is currently designed at what width and it's being expanded to what width?
So I don't know what the entrance width is, but.
It's currently designed at a 15-foot width, and we're going to be increasing that to an 18-foot width, which can accommodate a car, you know, able to bypass a vehicle at the menu board, you know, if they need to or they desire, so.
Paul Dumont from JMC, just for the record.
He's a regular here.
So additionally, there was a discussion of a one-way circulation, but the applicant does not feel that that's the best alternative for this property, is to keep the current design as we show it with two-way along the eastern portion of the building and not require everyone to wrap around the building, causing more visual impacts potentially to Route 6 and the neighbor of the church over there. Even though there is mitigations for landscaping there, we would prefer not to put more traffic that visits the site through that area. Additionally, one of the comments related to traffic control signage, so the applicant is willing to include some additional stop signs and stop bars at the access to the inner roadway there. So as you're leaving the drive-through, there would be a stop sign and a stop bar, which currently is not shown on the plan, as well as as you're leaving the two-way parking lot adjacent to the building, the applicant would be willing to propose those additional signage and pavement markings there. Lastly, as it comes to the queuing, there is a discussion in the review letter from Sam Schwartz about looking at and using the queuing data that we have provided as it relates to the Carmel location, not the Portchester location. I would like to note that there are, in the Carmel location, there's only one Taco Bell in the nearby vicinity. Within the Yorktown area, there's more than just one in the nearby vicinity that, so there is a little more ability to go to different locations compared to just Carmel's just having that one in a small area there. But in, they recommend to accommodate at least 11 vehicle queue within the drive-through. So right now, the plan accommodates eight vehicles within the drive-through lane without spilling into the parking lot. However, we feel that that's adequate to accommodate the projected queue on there. When you look at the Carmel queuing data that was provided in our previous submission, during the three-hour count period at the Carmel location, the queue only went beyond eight and a maximum of 11 for two 10-minute period times only during that whole three-hour period. So the vehicle queue can greatly be accommodated within that drive-through lane, so there would be a short two, 10-minute periods, potentially even less, because this is Carmel I'm talking about, not Yorktown with multiple Taco Bells here. But there would be a temporary encroachment to some of the parking spaces adjacent to the building just for the short time period that would be there. Otherwise, it can be fully accommodated within that drive-through. The rest of the comment letter is Sam Schwartz concurred with our traffic study and our findings. So that's really a quick synopsis in addressing their review letter, and I don't know if there is anything else or any comments that the board might have for me.
Just stay with me, Mark. Just one quick thing, because I asked Paul earlier today about the one-way comment from Sam Schwartz, and just wanted to make sure that the board understood. I mean, the concept is Sam Schwartz advocating that all vehicles entering, come in, park, and then exit the same way as the drive-through. The reason, the reason that that does not appear to be necessary, and Mark will speak to this more authoritatively than I, we have a standard 24-foot drive aisle between the parking spaces in that parking area. So if somebody's pulled in, they have the ability to back up, and if there is nobody queuing, because it's not that 10-minute window when there's an awful lot of people coming to Taco Bell, rather than looping all the way around the building, they back up like we do in every parking lot we park in, and we go out the way we came in. So in terms of pure efficiency as well as safety, and then there's the impact to our neighbors along the Route 6 corridor, we think it's a better way to go in and out. Is it the end of the world to go one-way? No, but we don't think there's really a justification in this instance for that. And when I read the Sam Schwartz letter, to me initially, it was like, oh, that seemed to make sense. I called Paul, and Paul said, we want to question the one-way comment, and I said, why? And he immediately directed me to the 24-foot drive aisle. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware, you all get to be the arbiters of that, but in this instance, we don't think it's necessarily a requirement, nor should it be a requirement, in our opinion, to design the queue for the absolute worst-case scenario of this, as Mark explains, 10-minute window in a three-hour period. It is relevant, folks, that unlike Carmel, and you said one Taco Bell in a small area, it's actually one Taco Bell in a very large area. I know, I wanted to make sure that there's one Taco Bell there. You got to go to Connecticut to get to the next Taco Bell. So the fact that we in Yorktown have multiple Taco Bell locations is empirically relevant. It's a drive-by kind of thing. If somebody wants to argue Taco Bell is a destination, well, then there would be three destinations in the town of Yorktown, therefore reducing the demand at any one of them. It is technically a drive-by type of use. So we're happy to answer any questions. I know your own consultant's here, and again, as Mark and Paul have said, we really appreciate the fact that you all came into the matter and have provided independent expert advice.
Yeah, while you guys are up the same, we've had some recent experience with drive-throughs. We just, and there is one in the area. We opened up.
Popeyes.
The Popeyes on Route 202, and there was traffic queued up to the McDonald's quarter-mile down the road. So, and, you know, obviously.
That's because Bill did a commercial about that chicken sandwich at a meeting when we were still remote. Let's not forget that. There was a whole thing at that meeting.
It subsided in a week and was down to normal.
And did cast, and I think a lot of it, you know, we've had one of our prior members, John Flynn, come up and talk about the COVID changes, right? So a lot has changed with the COVID, and obviously, there's absolute truth to that. And when we talked about the stacking and everything, we're all very concerned about the location of the daycare, right behind there, that, you know, one resident said that kids would be darting out, and so I think it was more than just, you know, the drive-through, and we wanted our consultant to look at the entirety of the project.
Makes total sense.
I will, I will just note that when we did our count of our queues in Carmel, it was during COVID as well. It was earlier this year when we did that count.
Did you look at the other two in town?
Well, one in town does not have a drive-through. The other one, I don't believe is contracted yet.
No, I think it's.
The one on 202?
No.
Rob Long Road, is it contracted?
Yeah.
Not open yet.
So, all right, that's not, all right. All right, so I think without further ado, we'll bring up our consultant. And I got to say again, really appreciate that the town board went out and proactively got environmental consultants and traffic consultants. Give you guys a lot of respect for that. That's, I can't tell you how helpful it is to us. And again, with a project like this, you know, especially when residents come in and they go, well, the traffic consultant's working for the applicant, when you get your own person in and they look at it objectively, you know, they're all professional engineers and no one's, but it just, it's a great help. So thank you and your board very much.
Well, thank you, and whatever we can do to make things smoother for our volunteers.
La Scala matarays.
I will triple his current salary right now.
I'm always up now.
You have your wages.
So how are you?
Good, yeah, I'm doing great. I'd be doing a lot better if there wasn't so much traffic on the turnpike, but, you know, car, I picked the wrong spur and, you know, car fire.
Oh, boy.
So, but happy to be here. Thank you for the. Thank you for the response. I think that most of what was said was, you know, very acceptable.
If we could, just for the record...
Oh, sorry, Joseph Millanese from Sam Schwartz Consulting.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah, so I guess we'll address some comment by comment. The first comment with the widening of the bypass lane, that seems acceptable as long, you could provide a turning movement diagram to show two vehicles making that concurrently. Okay, yep, then that should be, I think, acceptable that two vehicles could pass there. The one-way circulation comment, honestly, I didn't think that if that was two-way, that would be the end of the world. I just thought from a circulation standpoint, if, our thought was that if traffic, no, I didn't think we were going to get 11-car queues often, but I did think that it may exceed six pretty often, which would be the, I believe, six vehicles was at the point of menu board? Or seven vehicles was the point of the menu board? Either way, I thought at that point, anytime that the queue would back up into the parking lot, it would help circulation by having angled, angled parking and one-way, although I don't think it presents a safety issue. And actually, during the off-peak, you are correct, it would be easier to, and more efficient for vehicles to back up if you don't anticipate that regularly backing up to that point. Appreciate the stop control at those ingress and egress points. And then regarding the queue surveys, that, that also makes sense regarding, we didn't, I didn't take into account that there was not another Taco Bell within Carmel. We were really looking at the fast-food places within, within the immediate vicinity. And I think realistically, the fact that there isn't another Carmel within, there is not another Taco Bell within Carmel lends itself that more people would travel to that Taco Bell. I know Taco Bell is one of those restaurants that people will travel, travel out of the way to, so I think that's all reasonable. And then regarding the police reports, I think we concur on that, that I didn't think there was a crash issue on-site, although I know there were a few public comments about crashes at Six and Mohegan, which I don't know if you want to talk about that separately, because that was not addressed in the memo.
Are you concerned about that with this application?
No, the concern, well, the concern was just that, I believe by the public, that the additional left-turn volume would attribute to crashes at an already high-crash location. And, you know, our opinion on that is that while we are adding volumes, I think that it's not completely caused by the Taco Bell, but I do think as part of the application, the applicant should consider reaching out to New York State DOT to see if improvements can be made to the turning at, the turn, yeah, the left-turn phasing at that signal in regard to making it protected only. I think that honestly, that that signal probably should have protected only regardless of what volumes are making left there. But I think adding any volumes can contribute to left-turn crashes.
Okay. Did you have any thoughts about the use of the fast food and the daycare next to each other? Any concerns about that?
I don't think so. It didn't seem that the daycare, that there was any daycare spillback per the queue analysis from the daycare where there would be a conflict within the site driveway.
Okay.
I do think that the, the signal change at Route 6 and Mohegan would be relatively minor change. We also looked at, this was in light of the, some of the emails that were sent, the public emails. We did look at, well, in addition to the left-turn signal, relocating the stop bar slightly north. I think the stop bar was set pretty far back in the westbound direction, so. Was the stop bar further back here?
Yeah.
Setting that further to the north, or, sorry, not north.
West.
West. But again, I think that, that, that's something that New York State would need to be brought into for that signal.
Understood.
Yep.
I appreciate your report and very happy that you guys are on board.
Appreciate it.
And I, I think it's going to be a very big help to this board.
Happy to be here.
Thank you.
I've got a quick question. So, there was reference to something called a drive alley.
The drive, yep.
Which maybe, maybe that's between the parked cars, but it was 24 feet. What's, and maybe this is more for the applicant. What's the width of the driveway? Do we know? I mean, can it accommodate two cars, one coming and one going?
Yes, the, yeah, I think, I think what they're referring to is the drive alley.
Drive aisle.
Yes, so between, between the stops.
Correct.
Twenty-four, yeah, 24 feet could accommodate two safely.
So, you could easily have two car, one exiting, one entering.
Right, yeah.
So, I think two-way is a much better option.
Just to clarify, by, by widening the 15 to 19 to the menu board, you meant it's going to be the whole way through, right? Okay, yep, as long as we have a turning movement that shows that, that could operate.
Right.
Good with that. Thank you. Sorry?
I, I have one.
Sure.
Is there, was there any thought process put into when you're looking at traffic, if people would be planning bypasses through Mohegan to keep off of Route 6 and what that would do to the additional traffic in the residential areas?
Planning bypasses, sorry.
So, so they could bypass Route 6 and go back through Mohegan and cut through. Is that, was that looked at? Is that, is that something that is even, you know, a possibility per se in, in the look of the scheme of things through the map? I'm not, I'm not as familiar with that area.
That, that was not considered, but I, I did not, I didn't think you can cut through that development to...
You know, I think it's like...
To Sagamore over to Shrubel.
I think what I'd say is like, do a cut-through, like, for instance, East Main Street, Shrubel, right? Up until when the Town Board put a few stop signs in, it was a clear shot. So, you can get off Route 6, buzz through East Main Street, and get right into Taconic while hitting any traffic stops. No lights, no stop signs, nothing. So, the Town Board and their wisdom along with the Shrubel of International Schools Engineering Report put four-way stop in, which I got to tell you, has really helped the area. So, I don't think that was part of this look, Ed. I think some of the residents had come in that were concerned about the project, without the project, were saying that, you know, sometimes people cut through there.
Okay, and that is something, yeah, that, I, I did see a couple of emails come in late in the day on, on, that we just got that did say something about a cut-through.
Yeah.
We did not look at that yet, but we could take a look at that. And honestly, what, what you're saying, if, if, if in fact that people are using it as a cut-through, there's a lot of things you could do from four-way stop sign to a speed bump to, to, to chicane, we can...
There's, I think, and the, the board's got a bunch, like a, a traffic committee, I believe, that look at a lot of this. This is beyond this applicant, but it's, I think it's something that you'll hear a lot now that you're involved with the town, where, you know, there's people that just find, traffic's like water, right? Going to find the path of least resistance.
Sure.
You'll find La Scala scooting through there a lot.
I still think that projections like that, that shouldn't have any burden on, on the application.
Well, but I think the, the board, I think the board has been proactive, because they've, I know they've looked at other traffic issues, but nothing to do with this.
But we're saying about a bypass, a turnaround, going this way, and I, we're concerned just about the traffic in front of the place. Not that something could happen later on, the guy's going to know he's going to save two minutes by, you know, going through the corner.
It's not part of this application. I think the councilman just asked it as a point of clarity, because someone asked it. But it's not affecting this application.
As long as we...
Just, yeah, just a, a more open question, because we can sit here and talk about Shrubel and new road all night, right?
Yeah, yes, we could.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Clarification.
Anybody from the audience?
Nobody in the audience.
It's a packed house.
I have a question if I could.
Please.
This is for the applicant, either Paul or David. There have been a number of letters that have come in about trash in the general area. And what can the applicant do to minimize the likelihood of trash from its facility finding its way into the street or abutting properties?
Sorry.
Thanks, Joe.
So, I believe that the, when we opened the public hearing some months ago, the applicant did discuss that and subsequently spoke with Supervisor Slater about their plan. So, there's going to be several receptacles throughout the parking lot. I'm not sure how many. I know one of the letters asked how many. I'm not sure, but what the applicant did commit to was an enhanced pickup plan or a different pickup plan than what they normally do. They're going to have staff walking the parking lot multiple times throughout the day along with the Mohegan Avenue frontage and the Route 6 frontage to pick up any stray trash that's either been left or is, is blowing in the wind. So, they've committed to that, and that protocol will be in place when, when the restaurant opens.
And I got to tell you, as someone who lives right near the development, this development and the one next door and the ones across the street, I got to tell you, they're maintained immaculately. I mean, I remember some years back when Verizon was striking, there were teams of people up and down the sidewalk where they basically destroyed all the grass. Everything was trampled. The place was kind of wrecked up a little bit with these people protesting. Within a week of that being done, they had taken everything out, replanted, cleaned everything up, and within two weeks, you never knew anything. So, that's one thing that I'm not concerned about, because I've seen through the years how well-maintained these properties are. I mean, immaculate, even the front lawn where this, this building is. Again, our concern was what we heard from the residents, especially in particular with the two uses there, which it sounds like our consultant has made some tweaks. I think the, the stuff with the New York State DOT and concerns in this section, if we could look into how we resolve that.
And I'd like Mark to say a few words about that.
Okay.
If that's okay.
As far as the protected-only movement, obviously, that would be subject to DOT approval if it was to be approved. But, you know, not only, it's not as simple as just flipping a switch. There is additional equipment that would be needed. The only thing is, I don't know if that existing traffic signal poles could accommodate the existing, the additional loading that would be required to do that. So, in order to do that, there's currently a three-ball location on that approach for the through movements. And then there's adjacent four-section, which has the three balls, the red, the yellow, and the green, and then a bimodal, what we call arrow, which does the, the green and the yellow. In order to implement a protected-only phasing, what you need to do is you need to have two separate green ball locations, and you have, have to have a separate arrow indication of a red arrow, a yellow arrow, and a green arrow. So, essentially, you go from two heads to three heads on that approach. And I don't know, I haven't run any numbers, to see if those existing traffic signal poles could accommodate that additional loading. That's the only thing that I can say to that aspect of the thing.
All right, well, I know you guys did the job not that many years ago, right?
No, but I, I just, I, I don't know it off the top of my head to...
I get it, but I think it's a recent install, so I, I got to think within the last few years. I'm sure there was some factor of safety we were putting there. And I know now today, you know, you call Verdi and whatever, they'll come out and tell you in a few minutes whether they could do or not. And a lot of this equipment, you're able to take the guts out and replace things very simply. So, I would ask that if you could look at that.
Yeah, we can reach out to the DOT and, and see what they say on that aspect of, of that.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question, Mark?
Yeah.
What Joe had mentioned about moving the stop bar on that side, obviously, it's in its original location from when the intersection was configured originally and when there were driveways on the north side of the road. And I don't know if the, the poles are even in the proper space to be able to move it up because of where the lights are hanging.
Yeah, there's a certain distance that the, the head and the stop bar need to correlate to.
Right.
It's something mentioned in the manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. I'm not too sure specifically how far away that is from there as far as the actual distance.
Right.
Again, that's something that can, you know, be talked to with the DOT, obviously, subject to their approval. But yeah, the, when it was originally installed, there was the, I believe there was a, a small old takeout restaurant that was over on that corner before Ali took it over.
Right, and just because we're talking about this, because the distance to make the left turn from the stop bar all the way to Mohegan Avenue is quite far because of where the road used to be and those driveways were interfering, and now that those driveways are removed, you know, it might be a possibility in the future to move it up. But of course, that depends on the DOT.
It's all good points. Thank you. All right, so you guys will look into that for us.
Sure, we can pass it by them and, and see what they say on that.
Excellent, thank you.
We would ask Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that the public hearing be closed. It's been open for quite some time. We've attempted to respond to all comments. We know we're, we're not asking for any kind of secret determination or resolution. We will be back next month, but we would like the public hearing to be closed.
Any objections?
None.
No.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Good to see you all.
We were going to ask a question on the record of why you're no longer a Yorktown resident, but we don't want to give you too much of the business.
Under advice of counsel, I refuse to answer. All kidding aside, it's still really nice coming back here. You, your, your meetings, when you compare it and contrast with everywhere else in the county, you guys still run efficient, pleasant, and, and good meetings. So, I love coming back here.
We have good applications.
You know, something, something's wrong though, because there's no one else here but us.
It's the Delta.
Good to see you all. Take care.
Good seeing you. Say hello to everyone.
Hi.
And he was one of the speakers, and absolutely tremendous. You know, when you pull him out of this environment and you put him to work, he was so spot-on, but then they had like the doctors, planning, uh, a, a planning director, I guess John down there. He was so, I mean, the things they were pointing, it was, in T-Town, through it. It was fantastic, but very, very smart.
We have a couple more.
Yeah, we do.
We have to resolve those little questions that were raised tonight, and then we're done.
Which questions?
You know, the number of queues and...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. All right, so number seven on the agenda is EnviroGreen Associates. This is an adjourned public hearing, location of the East Main Street, Mohegan Lake. So, I have a motion to reopen the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Hello, Joe Reno, Principal Site Design Consultants. With me this evening is Steve Marino, the environmental, from Tim Miller Associates, the environmental consultant for the project. When we close, adjourned the public hearing the last time we were before you, it was so that we could get back to ABACA and address some minor comments that they had. Our, our architect went before ABACA last week and had some input. Prior to that, we met with, with the planning staff and got some input from John and Robin on the look of the building and added some cupolas to the building. That was all presented to the, to the, to the Architecture Review Board. They asked for some additional dimensional changes to the cupolas and the deletion of a window in the main, in the main dormer in the front of the building. And we, he resubmitted that, those changes today, and I think we're all set now with the back. Other than that, I think Steve has a little update on DEC and, oh, and just one other thing I just need to mention was as part of our discussion, when we met with John and Robin, we decided to pull the front of the building back, so the building is now smaller, to increase the width of the sidewalk area in front of the building. So, originally, we had it at five feet, now it's eight foot wide. So, the building is now down to 12,400 square feet. So, we've lost almost 1,000 square feet off the, off the last time that we were here.
In, in theory, would that open up possibly, like, if someone did put a restaurant in there or something along those... or something along those, something where there was some recreational space or out, the public use outside? Is that possible?
That would make it, it's not, it's not impossible. It would make it a little tight, but, you know, would be similar to any situation where, on any Main Street, if you, if you put tables out on the sidewalk,
Yeah.
you know, you'd have a smaller walking area just to get around those tables, but you could still have some tables.
Because I know you said it, I think this board and other Architectural Review Board, the, because of all the changes the projects went to, the lack of that, you know, outdoor spaces. But this project's been through the wringer.
Right.
Okay. How are you?
Good evening. Steve Marino, Tim Miller Associates. I'm not going to get confused this time. Just an update on where we are with DEC. As you just mentioned, there's been a number of iterations of this plan. We've been to DEC several times with different applications. We've been to the Army Corps of Engineers when that was necessary because we were filling wetlands in. We're no longer filling wetlands. So, last week, I did submit the revised plan set and an explanation of where we are with the town and with the application to DEC now for an updated permit application and to finally get a permit from them. And I did receive confirmation this morning that they've received the package and are in the process of reviewing it. So, just wanted to let you guys know that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it? I thought you were getting ready to present something.
I was going to, but I'll say that for the next...
Because we know this computer system is...
Joe, I just have a question.
Yes.
Abaca put out a memo today.
Yes.
Did you see that?
Yes, and we responded to it today.
Okay, so you're, you're up to speed with them?
Right.
Okay.
Right. That's it?
Jim?
Is that all we're waiting on?
I don't have anything else. Robin?
That's correct.
Good. Anybody from the audience? That's it. All right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the Enviro Green Associates?
Motion.
Their second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a long time coming.
Yeah, so if we get the Abaca straightened out, we should be in good shape to go.
Well, they still got the road with the DEC in front of them, so...
But that's not us.
Yeah, no, but, well, I mean, the Atlantic Appliance took a year and a half with that, you know? So, you don't know what's ahead of you.
Oh, them, yeah.
They're ready to go. Atlantic Appliance is ready to go.
Each move helps.
Okay, next we have Home and Hearth. This is a public informational hearing. Location is 1750 East Main Street. Do I have a motion to open the public informational hearing?
Uh, motion.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just gonna need, if you want to skip that and just let me get this booted up, if you don't mind.
What do you want me to do?
If you want to just skip over that and just let, and get that booted up?
Oh.
Let me get this booted, or Robin?
All right, so do we just hold that or do we have to hold on anything because...
You just want your site plan?
You want to do it tonight?
No, he want, he's just having computer problems.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't that. I wasn't, I wasn't ready. I didn't know you guys were going to be jumping to item seven.
Let's do the next, we'll come back to.
Okay, we'll come back to that one then. We also have the Cannelli Minor Subdivision. This is a request for reapproval. Location's 2777 Quinlan Street.
Good evening, Joseph Reno, Principal Site Design Consultants. As I've reported, at the last time, we asked for a time extension. The applicant is still not in a position to proceed with the project and he's requesting that you grant a new approval or reapprove the project so that he has time to put together what he needs to move it ahead.
Any issues, Robin?
No.
Yeah?
The only thing I want to do is I want to correct what Joe said. It's just an extension of an existing approval. It's not a reapproval.
Okay.
So, the statute of limitations for someone to challenge it doesn't run again.
So, it's a request for an extension of a re...
Extension of the existing approval.
Extending, right.
All right, so do I have a motion to request the extension for reapproval for the Cannelli Minor Subdivision?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we also have the Pied Piper Preschool Edition. This is a request for a second one-year time extension. Location's 2090 Crompton Road.
Yes, Joseph Reno, Principal Site Design Consultants. The owners of Pied Piper asking to, to extend the approval on that site. They have been working over the last few months on getting contractors lined up and pricing. And you can imagine with the cost of building materials, they're a little bit of a shell shock with that. But, but they still plan to proceed with the project once they get their, get it in their budget.
Any issues, Robin?
No.
Jim?
No issues.
All right, so if there's no issues from the board, do I have a motion to approve the second one-year time extension for the Pied Piper Preschool Edition?
Motion. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How'd you make out?
Okay, Robin's got it up for me. So, good evening, Joseph Reno, Principal Site Design Consultants. Here for, for a public informational hearing for the proposal for Home and Hearth, which is located at 1750 East Main Street. It's, it's in between the Volkswagen dealership and the gas station. It's a site, Robin, would you just go up one?
Up where?
Up, down one, rather, one slide.
Oh.
Yep. The site is a two-acre site. It's currently developed. There's an existing building on the site. Two buildings on the site as well as a parking area, which, which extends all the way back to a delineated New York State DEC wetland. So, for the most part, the site is already impacted. And Home and Hearth is a business that now operates in the town of Cortland. They sell fireplace and stoves and fuel material for those as well as they have a kitchen cabinet department. And they're looking to move their operation to Yorktown. You can go back to the first slide. They look to move their operation to Yorktown, construct a new building, which is a 5,500-square-foot building. The first floor would be mostly showroom area with some, with some storage in the rear portion of the building. And they would have a mezzanine area for office space and administrative use. In that, in the basement of that building, there would be storage for the products that they sell and materials that they sell as, and as well as parts and whatnot required for upkeep and maintenance or repairs. The, to the rear of the site, they're proposing a one-and-a-half-story, 4,500-square-foot storage building that's mostly going to contain fuel product like pellets for wood-burning stoves, which is, a large part of their business is supplying the pellets. There's currently 23 parking spaces shown. 22 are required based on our, on our count in accordance with the zoning requirements. There is no impact being expected in the wetland. And it is all buffer impact. But again, it's all area that, that has been or is currently impacted. And Steve will get into that in a minute. We also, also with it, with us is the project architect, Bob Phelan. And if you have any questions for him, he can, he can give you a presentation of a conceptual plans for the building. So, the project is going to require site plan approval from the planning board as well as a wetland permit because we are going to be in the buffer. Would you go two, two slides up? Uh, we, we, one more, I'm sorry, one more, Robin. We will be proposing stormwater management for all the new impervious area on the site. There are, can you just zoom into that, that area? Great, thank you. As you can see, to the left side and rear of the storage building, we're going to have rain gardens to take most of the surface runoff from those areas. We're also going to be proposing porous asphalt for the parking air, for the parking spaces to further reduce the, the, impact of stormwater and the amount of mitigation we need to, to manage all the stormwater and treatment of the stormwater. You can span that out now. So, in addition to the wetland permit, stormwater permit, we will, we will require to get a DOT permit for the entrance. We're pretty familiar with what they're going to require there because we did the site next door. And as you know, we also did the Audi dealership and we're working on the Enviro Green site plan. So, we, we know pretty much what they're going to be asking for as far as improvements along Route Six there. At this point, I'm going to ask Steve to come up and give a presentation on the mitigation plan.
Good evening. Steve Marino again. As Joe mentioned, the front part of the site is currently developed. The back part of the site is a DEC wetland. Look at the aerial there. That's the basic, that's the property outline. That dark area along the northern property line is the Mohegan Lake Outlet. So, the Mohegan Lake Outlet comes under. You can see it there, right there on that side of the street. Comes under Route Six and then flows off to the north towards Peak Scale Hollow Brook. So, all that area in the back is wetland. It's all tied into DEC Wetland 828, which extends from our site north and to the west, eventually connecting with the same wetland behind Enviro Green. So, it's all kind of one large, about a 60-acre wetland system that's there on the, on the north side of Route Six. So, as you can tell, Joe and I have worked on a number of these properties along the north side of Route Six, very familiar with the area and how, how things are working out there. Thanks, Robin, please. So, here's a close-up of it in existing conditions. It's the 2018 aerial. The wetland has been delineated and confirmed by the DEC. As you can see from the aerial, there are two existing buildings. And then there's the little nose that, that peaks up into the north there, currently used for, there's a large dumpster on site for their waste. And there's stacks and pellets of the, of the, of the wood pellets that they use for the, for the stoves. That area has been disturbed for a number of years. And I'll ask Robin just to go down one at a time, the next two slides. That's 2006, so you can see at that time, cars were parked up there in the same area that we're talking about, changing to a new warehouse building and parking spaces and stormwater management. In the current condition, there is no stormwater management on the site. You get runoff into the wetland from wherever it comes. And then one more, Robin? Here's 1976, and you can see again, that inclusion out into the wetland is, is not something new. It's been there since, you know, it's been there 40 years plus. So, we're just going to be continuing to use that. So, although it is a buffer encroachment technically, it's an encroachment into an existing disturbed buffer. I think what we're doing by preparing a stormwater management plan and doing some plantings along that edge will be an improvement to the site in the exist, from the existing condition. Robin, there should be one that's for a mitigation plan? Home and Hearth mitigation plan?
In here?
It's in, it's, it's past the, past the photos.
Oh.
Oh, it's on the same one as the photos, okay.
There's only four.
So, it's not? It should be on that, but it's not. But there is a mitigation, there's the stormwater management. And what I've done in terms of a mitigation plan is there's a line of plantings there along the back. There we go.
Yeah.
Found it, beautiful. So, the two basins will be planted. The rain gardens will be planted as wetlands with wetland species in them. And then there's a, a number of buffer and transitional plants that'll be used between the wetland and the, and the new disturbance. Unlike Enviro Green and some of the other properties we've worked on to the west, there isn't a lot of detritus and rubbish and stuff in the wetland itself and not a whole lot of invasive species on this property. That's more for the other sites we've been working on. So, really, we're focusing here more on separating the proposed development area from the wetland and creating a buffer line of dense plantings in order just to keep any more disturbance from getting further back into the wetland. The farther you go into that wetland, the better condition it's in. It's actually not in terrible condition within 10 or 15 feet of the existing development area. So, we're looking at, again, a buffer, a dense buffer planting to protect that area from the, from the proposed new development. And significantly, there'll be stormwater treatment now on the site where there hasn't been historically. And that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, any questions?
You said the architect's...
Oh, yeah. How are you?
Bob Phelan's my name. The, the architectural work on the building is most likely going to be performed by the people that are manufacturing the building because the intent was to have a manufactured metal building with enhancements on the street elevation and the pedestrian entrance to the building. And we've had very early conversations with a couple of firms. So, at this point, that firm has not been identified. So, I would describe this as a very generic depiction of what the applicant is looking for in terms of the size of the building and the, the access to the building and what the secondary building is going to look like. If you look at the drawing, the lower left-hand corner is basically the streetscape, which is going to, if you follow the roof line up and around, that is going to be an enhancement on the metal building with a stucco or drive-it type finish on a volume that follows that form of that building around. And then the face of the building will be glass, either obscured glass or translucent glass so that we can show the showroom when it's illuminated from the street. If you look at the elevation to the right of that, that similar form is going to be where the pedestrian entrance is. And since the building is going to be without a suspended ceiling similar to their showroom now, because of all the fireplaces and, and wood-burning stoves that they have, it, it gets very warm in there, so they have a large volume of space inside. So, you'll be able to look into that building as you come down Route Six, looking towards that elevation. The back of it will have an overhead door for delivery of, of products into the back of the building. Basically, the other two elevations will be almost solid with no fenestration whatsoever. And there was, Joe made reference to a small mezzanine level, which is basically an office for the owner to have above their, their sales area downstairs. If you could go to the, to the next drawing. This is the, the secondary building, which was referred to, I think, as an auxiliary building. There is a limitation by the town code of 20 feet high, which makes this a very unattractive elevation. And I had a discussion with the owners as to what we can do. And basically, it solves the problem in terms of the square footage, but it doesn't solve the problem in terms of the look of the building. And so, we're perhaps going to discuss with the town the possibility of a, a variance to allow us to build a smaller section in the middle of the building a little bit higher just for the aesthetics of it, not, not for a function. Other than that, everything on the site conforms to the requirements of the town. That, that building is going to be almost exclusively for the storage of pellets. Their business has expanded dramatically and they're getting increased demand and they have another off-site location where they're storing pellets now, plus they're storing them outside here. They want to have it in one location inside, which is almost exclusively this use, the use of this building will be for.
Is this also a metal building, intended to be a metal building?
Yes, with, again, with a similar treatment of the main, the center section of the building to try to give it some aesthetics, so it's just not a stamped metal building. We want it to look like something a little bit better than that.
Is the lack of pitch on that roof the way it is now, is that a safety issue with snow or anything like that?
That's one of my concerns. I had originally sketched out a building that had a roof pitched similar, similar to the other building and I reviewed the code and it said maximum 20 feet high. And we've got a 16-foot-high exterior wall to get the pellets in. Doesn't give us anything for a pitch, so we're kind of at an impasse at this point to, we don't want to have a flat roof. Doesn't give us anything for a pitch, so we're kind of at an impasse at this point to, we don't want to have a flat roof. And so, that was a minimum pitch. And if we can get a variance from that restriction of twenty feet high, then we can have that building look a little bit nicer.
So, the building is a non-combustible, all metal, stucco, steel, nothing? So, obviously, with the fireplace use, that's probably a good mix.
Oh, yes.
And it sounds like it's gonna, it sounds like a very interesting building. So, it's gonna be, the front will be glass, so you can see everything in there?
That's exactly what I'm proposing.
And in the back, you'd like to have a more architecturally pleasing building.
Exactly.
But our code restricts it.
It does restrict it in terms of height. And I didn't realize that until very late in the game. And plus, I, I just don't see another solution, given the size of the building.
You know, I gotta tell you, just off the cuff, with, you know, I think it's a very appropriate use, and especially in the area. We're very concerned, as our architectural board is in the town, of the obviously aesthetic appeal as you're going, then you see Mohegan and Audi and how nice a lot of these buildings are coming in. So, I mean, if, I think if you produce something that looked a lot more architecturally pleasing, especially for the area, you know, I think that's something we would certainly look at.
I, I used to sit on the architectural review board, and I used to sit on this board, so.
Here?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Oh.
A long time ago.
Not that long ago.
No, I was on the architectural review board when the mall was going in.
You want to come back? We've got some vacancies.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Bob, what's the height of the other building?
The, the restriction is thirty-five feet, but we're showing about twenty-seven.
Okay, I was just wondering if you could switch the designation, if that would help.
Well, the code says auxiliary building, and I assume that that means it's in support of the main function.
Right, but I would think the bigger building might be considered the main building, and the other could be considered the accessory building. That might get around a need for a variance.
No?
That might work.
You know what my intent is, is to make it look better.
You want it to look nice.
That's the only purpose for doing it. There, there is no functional use that we're gonna derive from having it be a taller building.
It wouldn't change the look, it just, the normal picture.
Right, it would just.
No, I understand, but then I would-
Well, it would give you the ability to change the building.
Yeah, I, I want to be able to change the look of this building.
I, I, listen, I, I think it makes sense.
And the other point I'd, I'd like to make that Joe did make is that when we first approached this property for the issues, and the owner has owned this property for a while, I basically said to him, we want to have an application that is within the requirements of the town. So, we're not asking the town for anything. We're going on, on land that's already been disturbed.
Understood.
So, that was the guiding force behind this whole thing. And thankfully, we've gotten to that point. This is, the elevation of this building is the only thing that we haven't been able to, to do to our liking. And.
So, I would- If there's that, if there is a variance, does that come from this board or from the building?
Yeah, procedurally, I don't know which way.
The height is from the ZB.
Well, maybe, I would, maybe Jim had a very interesting idea, maybe I could sit down.
I think that's worth exploring, too.
Yeah, I would sit down with Robin and see.
No, but the main building is larger than the auxiliary building.
Oh, okay.
So.
So, we need a variance. Well, I gotta tell you, if, if it made this, and, you know, I've been in the other store. Excellent store.
Yeah, beautiful.
You know, I think it's a great use if we can make it look more attractive.
We should do it.
I agree.
Can we do that co, can we do this as part of this application? Or do we need to complete this application before we go?
No, you could do that at the same time.
No, we've been going back and forth. It's happened a number of times there. You go back and forth between boards.
What's the, what's the zoning on the main building, thirty-five feet?
Thirty-five feet is the requirement on, the maximum height on the, on the main building.
So, if you were allowed thirty-five on that rear building, do you think you'd be able to do something more pleasing and safer?
Yeah, I don't need to go thirty-five even. I can stay below what the requirement is on the main building.
How, how do they measure the height? Is it to, you know, mean or?
Mid-point is enough.
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna just jump in, because I think it's worth just checking with the building inspector, because on another application that we're working on, a projection of a roof feature, he, he considers that an architectural feature. And he doesn't, he doesn't include that in the height of the building.
I think that's consistent, what, consistent with other municipalities, though.
Right, so we might-
We can explore that.
Yeah, so it's, it's worth asking him.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Right, because if you, if you recall on the hotel application, we had the clock tower. And it put us above, and he, he, he's considered that an architectural feature.
So, I, just, you know, pulling the board real quick, would anybody have any objections, even if it's a variance?
No.
No.
I, I think it's a great idea.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. So, that's it, that's all we have. And this, of course, is the Pih. We'll be having a formal public hearing. We're wrapping, wrapping up detailed engineering plans. And, and as you can see, Steve has made some progress on the mitigation plan. He'll be making an application to the DEC. And we'll, we'll be back again with, as I said, a more detailed set of plans.
And I would just, you know, as we've said to all the applicants as they've come in, obviously, the architecture is very important, but the landscape architecture is just as important as we, you know, start to see what's going on down.
Yep, and we'll have that together also.
Do you want to set a public hearing for him? Is that too soon?
I think it's probably.
A public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're still kind of-
Yeah, it's probably-
Tying up some of the, some of- Yeah, no, no, I, I appreciate it, and I, but I think, you know, within a month, we should be back with, with the, with the full, full set of drawings.
Well, Joe, would you want to set the public hearing for, say, November?
I, I would have no objection to doing that.
We'll get in early, because we seem to, been loading up on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no objection to doing that.
We should ease up a bit.
Yeah.
I hope.
No, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of things coming forward, but we might ease up after, after this couple of meetings.
Yeah, I mean, if Joe's-
Confident.
He is thinking about submitting a revised full package in, for October meetings, and then you would have no problem setting it up for November hearings. I mean, I don't think we need to.
That's, that sounds good to me.
Okay, so in reference to the Home and Hearth Public Information, do I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do I have a motion to move from the open session into the work, a regular session into the work session?
From me.
Okay, and for the note, for Tom, last, next meeting here is on the list.
One, one item?
Next meeting, though. The twenty-seventh of September. Thank you and good night.
Rich, on this next item, I gotta, I have to recuse myself?
Yep.
Understood, thank you. Tom, you can tell us when we're off. How are you? Oh, that's right. Tom, Susan wants you shut off. All right, so we have a town board referral. This is locations three, one, one, zero Ratcliffe Drive, Putnam Engineering.
Yes.
And it's to bring four hundred and twenty-five cubic yards of fill to level a portion of the rear yard.
Correct.
How are you?
Good.
So, what's going on?
I am Paul Lynch from Putnam Engineering. And basically, the urbans are looking to bring in fill so that they can extend their backyard so they have some usable space to be able, let's just put up swing sets or some other apparatuses for their little kids.
And the issue is those, some of those restrictions that were on the original approval in terms of the backyard?
No. No, there are no restrictions that I'm aware of.
No, they're requesting a permit from the town board because of the amount.
Of the amount of fill?
Of fill.
I mean, I didn't see any.
Bob designed one of the houses I built.
I didn't see any in sense. I don't remember him.
I don't remember.
That's Ratcliffe Drive. There's their house. There's their existing backyard area, which basically is this section up through here. So, they're just looking to bring in the fill, build in this section here so that they can extend that backyard out about twenty-five feet plus or minus.
Any issue with pushing stormwater or?
No, everything, drainage patterns do not change.
No, no issues at all?
No.
So, they're just looking to level off their backyard?
Just to bring in some fill to extend their backyard.
Okay. They have no septic or anything in the back?
No, sewer, sewer and water.
I know Ratcliffe.
And the wetlands, no issues like that?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. Anybody have any issues?
No. No planning issues.
No planning issues. So, we could do a nice memo? Sorry you had to wait for the whole meeting.
That's all right. Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
That's it.
Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a good night.